All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the special city council meeting to order Monday, October 26th at four o'clock. We'll call.
Kirby, mine.
Nicole, your draft.
Tom Marsilak.
Michelle Addo.
Lloyd Johnson.
Jared Bogie.
Kevin Triplet.
William McCormick.
Wendy Manson.
Deb Belter.
All right, and we are going to move item G up to item under B. And, Deb, chairs up. Kevin and Wendy are ready to send update on council member Marsilak asked to put this on here, then to get an update on where we're at.
So what I have from my side of things, radio stuff, new gear, and then the community center gets us to right around one hundred and seventy-five thousand, plus or minus a few thousand maybe here and there, when it's all said and done. And then, what do you all have?
So, so far, we've got masks. We've got two laptops, so we can work from home if needed. We included the wages of the public works employees for when they were rotating shifts, because they are considered public safety. I bought the shields for my election judges, and I bought five new booths, because I can only use half of my booths, so I bought five new ones because of social distancing. So without your gear, we're at one hundred and sixteen thousand, six fifty-two, or six sixty-two.
Hundred and what?
One sixteen, six six-two. And we have got two hundred and forty-four thousand. Radios and everything.
I just got some other radio ones on there. Puts us right around one ninety-six-ish.
And then, and then we've, I've got, I'm waiting for the guy from, well, it's now Home Depot Pro, was AmSan, and it was Brisbane Kennedy. So we order all of our supplies for the community center. We're looking at getting new paper towel dispensers and the soap that are touchless, and, which we can use then, and also stand-up hand sanitizers. We're getting toilet paper holders too, but we can't use those, that's COVID, but everything else we can, because the stuff that's over there is twenty-five years old. So I've got the guy, I'm waiting for him to give me back a final quote now on that. And then, we're still waiting for the front counter. The guy that you guys approved backed out on us. So I found somebody else that'll do just the counter and the window. Hopefully, he's been up here and I've looked at it, so I'm just waiting for his bid. Might have done stat chairs or others like that.
Thank you.
So, we're still under the two forty. Getting closer.
So we have nothing for community center for the sum?
Yeah, that includes the sum.
Oh, that includes that, okay.
Yep, yep.
And if you ask me to spend more money, I'm gonna say no, because I'm tired of it.
I think it tires me.
You won't hear that from me very often, but this has been an absolute drag for the last month and a half.
Everything is, everybody's so busy, because everybody's doing it, you know, it's got the money, and they're trying to spend it, so it's like trying to pull teeth getting people to give back to us on stuff.
See, now you know how millionaires speak.
Oh, geez. Yeah.
They're not under time crunch, so.
Yeah, when this all first started, it started back in May, but there was so much red tape that it was like, we're not even gonna pursue this, because it's not worth it. Then it started getting looser and looser and looser, and it really got loose in August, and it's like, oh, hey, free money. And that left us about two months to try and spend that type of money. So the fact that we've spent about eighty percent, plus or minus some, is pretty good to me, when we don't have somebody who's just dedicated to cares funding, like some cities or counties and stuff have. So it's, it's been a lot of meetings, a lot of quote gatherings, and a lot of pushing things through as quick as possible, just to beat the deadline that we have to have, which is coming up in about seventeen days.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Jared.
Okay, the next one we're gonna talk about is discuss city hall operations, COVID-19 pandemic. And the reason why I put this on here, what prompted it is a few things. I'm not sure how many of you are aware that Ray County Auditor's Office closed for a day because someone in their office got COVID, so they had to close. And people were going to go vote, and they couldn't vote because they were closed. And it really, it really threw some red flags up for us, because Wendy and I are both had election judges, and if we would both get sick and have to quarantine, who's gonna run the election, which is a big, huge deal. And then, I started doing some research, staff started doing some research with other cities, and, and then I guess the other thing was when council member Marsilak said that Joel, Joel from Rastison shouldn't come from CCC, because they don't even have their doors open. Their doors are shut, and they're not allowed to attend public meetings. So that got us thinking, maybe we need to think about this again. And the city of Winstead, where it formally worked, their doors are still locked. People have to make an appointment to come in. They have a special drop box for utility payments. City of Delano is still rotating. Some other cities that are still rotating, City of Medina is still, and the majority of these cities, these big cities that we did, Brooklyn Park, Medina, Independence, none of them are having meetings. They're all doing meetings by virtual, by Zoom. So I, that was a shocker to me. I just realized that too when I was reading through this. But like, Independence, their counter is only open Tuesday and Thursday. Everyone is on a rotating schedule, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, they work at home. Maple Lake is continuing to do normal. Winstead is, like I told you, closed.
Are they rotating too in Winstead?
They're rotating too in Winstead. Rappford, no changes. Howard Lake, no changes there. They're, they're still operating. Hutchinson, some work from home. And they set up a true rotating schedule that they're going to continue to use. Let's see here.
A lot of towns looks like they're rotating, and they're only open Monday through Thursday, they're closed on Fridays.
Annandale are, they're all in a rotating schedule, work one week off, one week on. And, let's see, City of Medina, rotating schedule. And then Jess checked with some of her clerk friends, and of all the ones that she checked with, Minneapolis obviously is rotating schedule, and Rosemont is rotating schedule, and Brooklyn Center, and all of those are still doing their council meetings, virtual, on Zoom. So, we just, we talked about it with Kevin, and we didn't, what you, I, I, the decision is going to be yours, and I just want you to discuss it, and think about what we wanna do here.
Are you thinking up just two elections, or?
I would, I would honestly say that we're, so the elections throw a big wrench in things here, that kinda snuck up on us without even really considering it, I guess. Both before and after. Mainly before here, because if we lose Deb and Wendy, I don't know what happens exactly. I don't know if anybody really knows what will happen.
We also have Jess at elections, so there's three of us that are going to be working it.
And we need to let you know that we have to be there on street, because, because of COVID, she had some election judges backed out, so she needs everybody there. So I'm sorry to interrupt you.
And I don't know what the right answer is. Maybe it's some kind of a hybrid thing, or postponing some meetings, or something like that here in the interim. But moving forward to Election Day, that's important, because we only have a week at this point. Then, moving beyond Election Day, so the Election Day, we don't know what's gonna happen. I wouldn't be surprised if there's not outbreaks all over the place afterwards, because it could be, it could be a complete mess with it. If for some reason something happens, and this has been on all of our radars for a long time, if we have an outbreak here at the office, the office just might have to be closed for fourteen days, which I think would be able to be okay at a town our size. You guys aren't getting a whole lot of counter work and stuff like that right now anyways. But it's the preceding time to the elections, I think that needs to be on the forefront of our thoughts right now.
So like, up to elections, and then like a couple weeks afterwards as well, type of thing?
Well, if you look at the numbers right now, there's, they're seeing a lot of spikes in numbers throughout both Minnesota, Wisconsin, South Dakota, and North Dakota, basically the whole Midwest. They're learning more about this virus as the days go on, and that it's, does like cold weather, unfortunately. And a lot of people are coming down with seasonal colds, flus, things like that. Allergies are gonna start popping, but they're getting quarantined, because they can't get tested, therefore it's just assumed that it's COVID, which is a very dangerous thing. You have small cities this size, and people still trying to go to work and things like that. We're gonna end up right back where we were in April, is my fear here, relatively quickly, especially with the seasonal changes and everything going along those lines, so.
Well, and Ray County is up, because rumor has it that the schools are gonna be going to, be going back, shutting down, going back to students being home. So.
Depending on the school, yes.
Yeah, depends on the school district. They get to make the call.
Yep, yep, yep.
I know, in Waverly, they've already set it up that they've got so few kids in their class. They have some classes that don't have more than twelve kids. So, they don't have to, they won't have to for those. The elementary kids won't have to send them home.
I just talked to somebody that works at Delano School, and they're afraid that it's gonna, it's not coming from the county, it's going to come from the state. And if the state says the county has to shut down, all the schools in the county have to shut down.
Not the private ones.
Not private ones. So, I mean, that's just a matter of time. Who knows? Nobody knows. It's a crystal ball.
And, and I don't know how close attention you paid when we were rotating before, but it worked out beautifully. We were doing perfect with that, so.
The two, those two laptops we bought are set up that Jess and I can both work. We can do Banyan from home now. So, I cannot do payroll from home. I won't access that from home. That's too, but I can do fund accounting from home. I wouldn't have to come in like just to run checks, but I can do everything else from home, because everything that's out on fund accounting is public. So, that I can access from home. Jess can do a lot of her stuff from home, other than she wouldn't be able to do like her payments and stuff. She'd have to come in to do that, but.
So if we just kinda went on a rotating schedule like we did before?
And I, and I can rotate Deb and Jess on Election Day. Jess is gonna be there at six in the morning, Deb's not gonna come till later, but if I have enough people, I can maybe hold Deb off until a little bit later on in the day, and then let Jess not be there after that, send Jess out. I mean, I'm still gonna be there all day, so unfortunately they, they might just have to stay away from me.
And I'm gonna, just so you know, I'm gonna open up here and be here.
Yeah.
Right. So if we did a rotation, would it be two on, two off, the same way we did before?
Yeah, so we thought probably Jess and I would work together, and her and Heidi would work together, so that us two are not here at the same time.
But Heidi will have to come and open up, because I.
You come in.
My surgeon has me working from home in the morning, and I have physical therapy two days a week in the morning, so.
Have you talked to Heidi about being able to be here?
No, because I wanted to wait to see what you guys decided.
Okay. So then if we did that rotation, what we look at for the whole month in November, and then reevaluate in December?
I think that's a good idea.
That should get us through it, and at least that way we know we've gotten through elections, and if anybody were to get sick, we at least, because sometimes it takes a while before anybody knows they're sick, and then you're, you're fourteen days after that yet, but so.
And we have a couple holidays in November too, that we're kinda maybe clean things up a little bit too, and see what happens with all of that jazz, and I think it's gonna probably warrant another meeting or two.
Right.
When we start seeing some numbers from things, so. It, it's a very weird time, and we don't know, like they said, if my Mountain Dew was a crystal ball, I'd be walking crystal ball, but.
You just don't know what you're gonna get. Yeah. And the other thing, I'm just, if I get it, it's like, okay, well, I got it, that's fine, but I'm just worried about getting through elections. It's not like we can say, oh, sorry, we're not having elections today.
And I, I would say, you know, the state still does recommend, you know, if you can work from home, we should be working from home. I'm not saying that we have to take our staff out completely and stuff, but if we can make, you know, on her updates, she's just working from home type thing, she's got stuff to do, things along those lines, I think that would be a benefit to the city and everybody involved, just to try and curb this the best that we can before it comes back and smacks us upside the head.
Is this included public works too, or just the?
Just the office.
Just the office, because those guys are in their own truck.
Right, and they're outside, yeah.
Is this something too, that we can try to apply for some of that funding before the deadline, or is that not possible, because we're just right up next to the deadline?
For your COVID, for the CARES Act? We can't use it for us, because we're not considered public safety.
That's weird, because you're protecting the public on Election Day, so.
Well, I guess I probably couldn't try to look at it that way. I don't know.
Well, so.
I'm not sure.
If you're in agreement with it, if you wanna discuss it, or obviously do that, but if you're in agreement with it, I think we would want to motion, probably starting it tomorrow, and then we as staff will have to sit down and figure out what schedules we want to work.
I'll make a motion to put a rotating schedule for the city office staff, per the discussion, ending, or ending at the end of November, and then being revisited every time.
Nikki, use that.
Good guy, second.
All right, Kirby?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Alvo, item?
Aye.
And Nicole?
Aye.
All right, Nicole, pass it to Nicole.
Thank you very much.
It's knocked out way too fast.
All right, Jared.
All right, good evening, mayor.
Thanks, Kevin.
Council.
Jared, before you get started, I just wanna make a comment that we have people in the audience here today, but we are not taking comments today. This is not a public hearing, okay? Okay, thank you.
Great. So what's before you this evening is actually the result of the October 12th city council meeting, where we discussed preparing an amendment to the previously approved report. And I handed out some slides, and we'll go through those. But as Deb mentioned, ultimately, this is providing that information that you all requested on October 12th. And we do have some recommendations here, similar to the first part of the project, where we had an open house and a public hearing. Ultimately, the action being asked of council this evening is to authorize that open house and pass a resolution following the public hearing. So what that process looks like is, same as the, I'm gonna call it the south half, so it's easier to kinda visualize. But previously, the south half of the project, we sent out notices to every single property owner, invited them to the open house, and then we also identified when the public hearing was gonna be held. And ultimately, that public hearing is their opportunity to come and voice their support or concerns relative to the project itself. So, I am gonna go through this a little bit. It's gonna seem repetitive from the last time. Simply, we've added essentially to the project very similar improvements never included previously. The other thing I did wanna point out is, some of the discussions that we had from the street with previously, those have been incorporated into the south half of the project, which will, so I know we, we had some comments at the public hearing. We came back with a revised map with the street widths, and we've incorporated that here into the, into the document. Ultimately, and again, council hasn't made this decision yet, but one of the funding sources, and we'll get to this in a slide, one of the funding, potential funding sources that have been identified is assessments. Now, that's, council hasn't made that decision, and that decision doesn't get made tonight. It doesn't get made at the public hearing, but it gets made ultimately when we go through the final financing for the project. So certainly, I mean, assessments are important, don't get me wrong, but to get to that point, whether council decides to assess or not, we have to go through this process. So that's where we're at, by way of background. So I'll just dive in. So the first slide, slide number two in the bottom right-hand corner, identifies the project area. And what I was referring to as the previous project was everything south of the railroad tracks. Now, the amended project area also incorporates that area, First Street North and the other streets, Emerson, north of the railroad tracks. So that's what's identified on the project area map. The next slide basically just identifies each street and the extents, the start or the end of each portion of that street. And ultimately, this is what you saw in your packets for the public hearing notice, because one of the requirements is we have to identify each street, the beginning point and the end point in that public hearing notice. Page four, ultimately, the reason this project started and subsequently was expanded to be investigated on October 12th was the sewer, the water, and the streets. In addition to that, and sometimes it's easy to lump storm sewer in the streets, but as we've been out in the public meeting, just reviewing the project, completing the amendment, you know, a lot of property owners have talked about drainage concerns throughout the entire project area, not only the previous project area that we looked at, but particularly on the north. One property owner does have a garage that sits below the road, and when it rains, the water runs right to the garage. So he was very, very adamant in pointing that out to us as we went through the, the north area or the amended area. So ultimately, just that by way of refreshment, sanitary sewer, we and his staff have been having problems with, with plugging, things of that nature. It's difficult to get jitters through there to adequately maintain the system, and it's, it's clay tile, ultimately, that clay tile. We, we see this in numerous locations, where that clay tile is either cracked, or the joints are offset, and it creates a lot of, not only maintenance issues, but concerns relative to backups, and I know nobody wants that to happen either. So, the sanitary sewer is definitely driving for us, the water main. Water main, as part of the project, there's a couple loops that are being identified as being completed with it. And ultimately, what a loop does is it connects two parts of a system, so that water can flow both ways. It's looked favorably upon from the ISO rating, as well as the Public Facilities Authority, which is one of the funding options that we've considered for the project, for the water main. So, that's another funding thing. And as you can see there, we talked about it in the past, there's a couple long services, and cast iron pipe, definitely not the material that's used today, because of its longevity, and that's what we're running into with the vintage type materials. So, streets, I think, I don't think I have to go into a lot of explanation about the condition of those streets, particularly the amended project area with First Street North. That was definitely discussed at the previous council meeting, and it's, it's definitely in rough shape, and creating some, creating some maintenance issues for, for staff as well, so. Page five is actually the street improvements in the map, and you'll notice the, the pink on the left-hand side of the, of the page there, that is a Millen overlay is what's being recommended there. It came out as part of the pavement management report, the condition of that roadway. And ultimately, you know, as, as we talked about it as staff, if you build a brand-new street on First, and then you drive a bunch of trucks over it to the Millen overlay, a new portion, we just thought that it would probably be best to incorporate those two projects together. Now, the Millen overlay, and I, I need to point this out, because the Millen overlay piece, that's considered maintenance, similar to the 2020 street improvement project that's nearly complete right now. So that's not an assessment discussion. That's city policy, the Millen overlay is paid for by a street improvement fund. So that's not part of the assessment, but it's important to show that, just to know that, you know, we're thinking more long-term than just reconstruction as part of this project. We wanna maintain that, that surface, and we don't wanna jeopardize the integrity of it by running a bunch of trucks over it a year or two later. So, the other beauty of that, and we saw it in, in 2020 here, is the economies of scale with, if you have a large enough project, the overall unit prices come down, so that's a benefit not only to the city from their fund standpoint, but also to the residents, should council decide to move forward with, with assessments. And regardless of whether or not assessments are part of it, ultimately, it impacts the fund balances and the taxes anyway, so. That, I wanted to point that pink section on as Millen overlay, it's identified in the, in the legend, but I, I wanted to draw special attention to that. But then otherwise, street widths are identified there. The other thing that I wanted to point out on First Street North, once you get out of the pink section, you move into the blue, that's, that's proposed as thirty-eight feet, and that's exactly what it is today, so we're not proposing on, on changing those street widths in there. But as you continue east out to Cassatt 12, that street in there, the right-of-way is very limited. And you might ask, well, why didn't you, why aren't you recommending continuing a thirty-eight-foot street all the way out to Cassatt 12? Because ultimately, First Street is a, is termed a collector in the transportation plan, but it's because of the right-of-way, and there's just not right-of-way adequate there to accommodate that. If you notice, there's a couple squiggly lines on the south side of First Street North. That represents a retaining wall that will likely be needed, just to construct it to that minimum width of twenty-eight feet. So, that's something that's gonna need to be looked at during design, but we recognize that the houses on the north side are very close to the road the way it is, and we certainly don't wanna go any closer to them. But in order to, well, you can see there, on the, on the very east end, it's twenty-eight feet wide. It kinda narrows down to twenty-one, and back to twenty-four, and then to twenty-eight.
Those were in the packet, it had said that you'd have to talk to the railroad about getting access into their property to extend, to widen the road there, right?
That's correct. Yep, exactly. So as part of the design process, that'll definitely need to be a discussion with the railroad.
How, how often does the railroad let people go into their, you know, right-of-way area to do that type of stuff?
That's a good question.
Because that would also cause a sidewalk over as well, which.
Right. A lot of that depends on the individual at the railroad you're working with. Fortunately, we, we've been involved in a project where it was actually rerouting a Trump Highway around a community, and redoing some rail spurs. So we have a really good contact at the NSF, that we've worked with for over three or four years on that particular project. So I think it would be, I'm not gonna say that it's gonna be a walk in the park, but I'm gonna, I will say that based on our contacts, I'm, I'm confident that at least we can have those discussions. Worst-case scenario, I, I'm not sure what the worst-case scenario is right now, but certainly, I think it's something that should be explored. I don't think we wanna, we wanna explore it to the extent of thirty-eight feet wide, just because that, I think we need to find a, a happy medium, if you will, where we can accommodate the traffic we need to, and still not get into the railroad as much as we would like. So that's why we're proposing the twenty-eight feet ultimately. I think it'll, it'll serve the needs of the traffic that we're anticipating. It won't get any closer to the homes on the north side, and it'll preserve that pedestrian corridor through there, so.
I know you'd mentioned there like a retain, retaining wall over here as well, but is there any talk of any more of those kinda like metal barriers down First Street? I know the curb will help when the curb goes up on the south side of First Street, but is there any talk of a, some of those metal barriers to kinda help prevent any of those cars going down on that ditch?
Oh, guardrail. Yes, absolutely, and that's included in you.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So, but from the amended area standpoint, basically what we're talking about is thirty-eight feet, you know, along that's, in, in the blue, along First Street, and then along Emerson, and the rest being twenty-eight, which is the, which is the street width that was recommended to go down to when we received comments from others at previous public hearings, so. And ultimately, that'll reduce any. So, and ultimately, that'll reduce any impact associated with the improvements. So that's kind of a summary of the proposed street improvements. One comment that we did receive, and I think I mentioned previously, that we look at investigating as part of that design process, is along First Street South. We've had inquiries whether or not that sidewalk could be moved to the north side rather than the south side, and we can definitely take a look at that during the design, definitely because the residents, you know, brought it up, and it seems to make sense. We've talked to the staff, definitely if it fits in there, we don't see any reason why it couldn't. So we just haven't got into the design. We don't have topography. We don't know exactly how everything's going to fit yet. So that's why it's still showing on the south side as it always has been. Just on page six, the street improvements, basically that's more in-depth discussion as to what the widths are, but the map on that previous page really explains it visually rather than on the grid too. But curbing gutter is proposed on all streets, and that'll definitely help with some of those drainage concerns, particularly the people that have water running down into their grabs. So sidewalk locations, we talked about that a little bit. I think we've got them pretty well nailed down except for that First Street South, and we'll take a look at that as part of the design process. And then we talked about the mill and overlay component there too. Page seven ultimately are the typical sections, and really what those show is the different street widths. The pavement sections themselves do not vary very much, but it's the different street sections, whether that be the 38 and 32 shown on page seven, or the 28-foot shown on page eight. And then ultimately, the one on the very bottom is ultimately that mill and overlay section, identically similar to what was done on the 2020 street maintenance project, you mill an inch and a half of the top or of the culminus off, pave an inch and a half back, so. And of course, if there's any curb repairs that need to be done, that'll be incorporated as well, but very less of a burden to the residents in that area than a reconstruction where you're replacing sanitary sewer and water and utilities. Page nine identifies the sanitary sewer components of the project. Ultimately, with the amended project area or the area north of the tracks, we're looking at a stretch of sanitary sewer along First Street and then Center and Second. So not the entire project area, but those are the key component areas that have been the maintenance struggle, if you will. Utility improvements on the next page identifies the water main, and very similar to the southern portion, but new water mains through that area to replace some of the existing ductile iron and cast iron pipes that are in place. New hydrants will go in with gate valves so that if something happens to the hydrant, the gate valve in front of the hydrant can be shut off. Staff can repair the hydrant as needed and get it back up and running as soon as possible. So one item to note that comes in with the amended project area, there is an existing water main loop underneath the railroad that we've identified as being replaced. Once we move forward into the design process, given council's approval, the city has a water model. We'll model that and make sure that, number one, that the loop is still needed. We do have another loop in town, but we'll take a closer look at that and make sure that it's something that needs to be replaced. Because if it doesn't need to be replaced, there's no point in spending the money to do it. So that analysis will take place as part of the design project. Page 11 really talks about storm sewer, and you'll note that there is some existing storm sewer throughout the project area, but we're identifying some modifications or improvements to that. The area on First Street North and Emerson, that's one of those areas that's been identified by residents in that area, having some deficiencies. So that's definitely one area that will receive some additional catch patients to collect the water and piping and get it out of that area. And then ultimately, the curbing gutter, as I mentioned previously, will definitely help with that effort. So the next slide, slide 12, identifies the cost participation. This is identically similar to the cost participation that we had included in the original project area, and ultimately, what this does is it basically explains Wright County's cost participation policy for those, for the county roads within the original project area. So that's a, just to review, page 13 identifies the project cost summary, and starting on the left with the street, the sanitary sewer, the water main, and the storm sewer, you'll see Wright County's street participation portion and the storm sewer. That hasn't changed from the original project that you've seen, and then the city cost and the total cost there is identified for the, this includes the entire project area, both north and south of the tracks. Page 14 identifies the potential project funding sources. Obviously, we have county participation, the projects included in the county budget for 2021. The other potential sources there, we've identified our city capital improvement plan fund, the potential for assessments, and again, that's up to council, and that's not a decision that's made tonight or at the public hearing, but it's certainly an option as a potential funding source for the improvement. And then Public Facilities Authority, the Public Facilities application that's been submitted, the city's project or this project is actually identified on that list, so it is eligible for funding for water main component of the project. So that's definitely a viable option should the city elect to pursue that. And certainly after the public hearing's over, whenever from that schedule that we've identified the potential of having that on November 9th, that's something that Wendy and staff and all of us will meet with the city's financial advisor, and ultimately, that's when we start working on the, what does this look like? If there are assessments, what does it look like if there are not? And then bring that package to council for how the improvements will be funded ultimately. These are just simply sources that have been identified as potentials moving forward. And then the next slide, slide 15, is a breakdown of the assessments. These are very similar to the assessments that were identified as part of the original project area. The amounts really haven't changed a lot, very, very in line with what was presented previously. It's just the total assessment amount is greater because of the project area increase. Sheet 16 identifies the project schedule. Based on the amended project area, we're recommending that the public hearing be held on November 9th. For the PFA funding component of the project, they do require that the plans and specs be submitted in March for their review. Now, as you all probably are aware, the bonding bill was signed by the governor. PFA, at that point, their funding sources are kind of in nimble, as you can imagine, because they weren't fully funded. Now with the funding, there's a potential that they're going to amend the IUP, which is their list of projects that are going to get funded. We've heard through the grapevine, and this isn't for sure, but that they might amend that as of December 1st. So ultimately, then, the plans and specs to meet their funding deadline would have to be submitted in June, but if everybody submits their plans in June, that's going to be a nightmare. So we're proposing this March schedule to stay in line, keep that project on top of the list, if you will, for their review at least, so that it gets certified and gives the city the best opportunity to collect those funds and move the project forward. That would provide for a bid opening right around that April timeframe, and then could accept the bids and should council choose, or the project in May of 2021. Certainly, there's things like discussions with the railroad that could shift the schedule a little bit, but I don't see it being as a huge threat, at least at this point. Certainly, we'll keep council updated in progress along the way as things continue to move forward. And then construction, we've talked about that previously. Construction starting in 2021 and then finished in 2022. Certainly, with the north area and south area, that's going to provide some flexibility for the contractor to be working and still accommodate the city celebration and all the other things. I know I've talked to Kevin about making sure the fire hall is open and all those things. So it's definitely going to be a phased project, and that flexibility, starting in one construction season and ending the following, definitely provides some flexibility for the contractor and results ultimately in better pricing, more flexible the schedule can be with the contractor. There'll still be completion dates, interim completion dates, that hey, you can't, you can't just open this thing up, lock away for two weeks and then come back. There'd be very rigid completion dates once they start a portion, but from an overall standpoint, it gives them flexibility to build out their schedule based on where their gaps might be in their workload, so. And then ultimately, the final assessment hearing, should that be a funding component, would that be in November 22. So ultimately, if assessments move forward, the assessments would become payable in 2023 for the improvement. So that's kind of the project schedule as we see it right now. And then with that, I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions that council may have. And the recommended action, or what we're recommending, is that an open house be held on November 4th from 5:30 to 7:30 for the residents in this amended project area. All of the residents of the south of there, obviously, we had an open house and a public hearing, but for the amended project area, we invite them to an open house, very similar to the one that we held previously. And then we're recommending that the public hearing be held at the November 9th, city council meeting. So there is a resolution in your packets this evening, and with that, I'll be quiet in answering any questions that you might have.
I'm just going to say one thing. You guys need to think long and hard about this. I know the scope of this project has changed. We went from five or six million to nine million. Everybody's promising no assessments. Everybody's promising no tax increases, but you need to be realistic. With no assessments and no tax increases, you might as well not even do this project. At nine million dollars, we're looking at five million being paid for streets out of general fund, which is part of either levy, assessments, or both. On five million dollars, on 5.7 million dollars, you're looking at probably close to $500,000 a year in bond payments. That has come from somewhere. So just keep that in mind when you're out. I know a lot of you are up for election, but just keep it in mind. You got to be realistic because it has to come from somewhere. We've got $200,000 from Conroe 12 that we make a bond payment on. That's part of our levy. That will just can roll right over, but you're still looking at $300,000 that has come from somewhere, or $200,000, just depending on where our interest falls, you know, that kind of stuff. We'll get money from PFA for some of it. That'll be paid with water and sewer rates. And some of those, like some of our other bonds that are now, that water and sewer are now paying, will also be dropped off, so some of that'll just roll over too. But I just want you to know, I know they've put a lot of time into this, but with the expansion of the project, we're looking at a pretty good chunk of money. So just know that before you make too many promises to people, and think about where it's going to come from, because it doesn't magically appear either. So I just want to throw that out there so that everybody kind of is aware of it ahead of time. And there really is nothing you can cut out. I mean, like Jared said, we're looking at clay pipes that have been laying there since the 1960s. We've already had one backup on First Street or on Center Avenue North that flooded somebody's basement.
Continue to kick the can down the road.
Yes.
You'd be in the same situation that the county was in with the government building. About $20 million building 10 years ago, not costing $52 million.
Yeah, absolutely. It's only going to get more expensive. And I mean, the water lines, I think, have been laying in there since the 1930s, because that first water house was built in 1930-something. So some of those water lines on First Street, Center Avenue, some of those streets, like, I don't know how Old Bunny's House is, but you know, when they put water in in the 30s, I'm sure that house was there. So those lines are since the 30s. So do they need to be replaced? Absolutely. They're going to. It's not a matter of if something breaks, it's a matter of when something breaks and people's basements flood. So it's not a project we can really put off any longer. I mean, I think we've put it off as long as we possibly can, but just be aware that we're going to be talking funding sources, you know, down the road here, so. Just wanted to throw that out there. That was my two cents worth, Jared.
Well, yeah, good points.
So the resolution before you tonight is just to have them continue on with the schedule that you just showed you.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 2020-29. We received feasibility report and call hearing on improvement for November 9th.
Second.
Second.
November 9th.
November 9th.
And curbing.
I thought you were correcting that.
All right. Is there any other discussion? All right, Tom.
Hi.
Snipole.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Hi.
How about I and Kirby?
Yes.
Okay. More than passes five zero. Thanks, Jared.
Thanks, council.
Thank you.
Council member Wayne asked to put this on the agenda, so I don't know if you want to start just kind of...
Couple weeks ago, actually, before it snowed, so I don't know if that's why it snowed, that I asked to put it on there, or what, but...
It's all your fault.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I want to, can I just quick make a statement before we get started? I just wanted you to know that I am going to be sending letters out to residents who are putting their snow on the street, are shoveling their snow on the street, or plowing on the street. That is against Minnesota State statute 160.2715. I spoke with Mr. Triplett today, and if they continue to do that, we will be contacting Wright County Sheriff's Office, and they could be cited because it is against a statute. So I just wanted to make that clear to everybody.
You know, I just thought it'd be good to kind of have the conversation before it snowed.
It's going to melt.
But...
2020. It's just going to melt.
Yeah, kind of talk about some of the usual complaints that we get, because I know wintertime is, I'm sure Wayne phones all the time, people are like, oh, this didn't happen, or they didn't plow my road, or, but they don't call you back and tell you that it was plowed 10 minutes after they called. Or, you know, just whatever, that, you know, people are plowing too far away from the curbs, or, you know, knocking on mailboxes. I just thought it'd be a good idea to talk about it before we ended up having to deal with it, which didn't work out, but...
Or they're putting snow on people's property. We have like 14 foot on everybody's property next to the road is a utility easement. That's where we put the snow. Some people don't like it. Some people put up stakes along the edge of the curb, and we can't go beyond them stakes. Where are we supposed to go with the snow? They want us to take it down the street and give it to somebody else. We can't do that. We're going to treat everybody to the same.
One thing bad, though, is complaint that I usually got was they shovel off their sidewalk like 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the morning before they go to work. And then when they come home, the snowfall went by and plowed it all up again.
Well, we go out early and open the roads, and then we go back and actually plow them. If somebody's parked on the road, causes a bigger mess. When it's all done, then we have to go back and plow it again, and that's when a lot of driveways get hit, a lot of sidewalks.
And just so you know, we actually laugh about that here at City Hall, because he, at this last snow, got a ton of complaints about that. That is an exclusive to Montrose. It happens in every community. They go through, they plow, and the sidewalks and the driveways get blocked.
You can't call everybody and find out under the shovel they're...
Exactly.
All the main routes are plowed kind of first, or opened up first. Then we do the secondaries.
Yeah, the, the high traffic roads and then branch out after that.
Yep.
When, when do you look at, at what point do you tell them to go out and plow?
Whenever it quits snowing, you know, or there's not a big spread, it'd be by morning. Try to get it cleaned up before people go to work.
So usually what happens is you come in like later, like if it's snowing right now, they're going to come in later tonight to come in once traffic's not so bad.
Later tonight, if it's windy all night, we want to be early in the morning before people go to work and try to get it done.
So we don't plow unless it's at least two inches.
Right.
Right. It's all in policy, so.
And so then, just to clarify on the sidewalk situation too, so if it snows today, they have 24 hours from now until tomorrow, but if it snows again tomorrow, it's extended 24 hours.
Starts over again, yes.
Okay, yeah.
And, and part of that is, and Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, but they don't have time to even go and look and see what sidewalks are showing, because they're so busy trying to clean everything up, so.
So sometimes it's four or five days later before.
Yeah, we get to them when we're done with everything involved, so.
I can honestly tell you that the lead, the people that we've contacted, it's been a few days after because it took us a while to get our stuff cleaned up.
Are they, I don't know, are the guys able to try to get closer to some of the curbs? I just, that's something that I know that people have, there were some posts on Next Door, and someone, of course, commented on it again as soon as it snowed this year about how they, some curbs, they're four or five feet away from the curb. And I guess sometimes that's, you know, due to there, somebody left their car out there. There were so many cars out there this year, the snow came down and moved it out of the road if it snows, but.
Yeah, and they try to stay away from the curb, because you start rubbing the curbs, you start breaking equipment.
Yeah, well, I'm not talking about like rubbing the curb the whole way, but.
Yeah, they're trying to get as close as they can if there's no obstructions.
The other problem we have is part of this town had the B-style, not B-style, the surmountable curbs, like Montrose Meadows, the old, the first part of Montrose Meadows. Some of over, across the tracks, the first part, like Parkside Meadows, Parkview, some of those all had surmountable curves, because that was the thing to do at the time, so you could just drag over them. But when you go to snowplow, you can't tell where the lawn is or where the curb is.
Plow will right over.
So they try to stay away as much as they can, because we get so many calls from people that say, they tore my grass up. So it's, it's either we get calls because we didn't get close enough to curb, or we get calls because we tore up their grass. There's never a happy meeting.
Yeah, well, that's, and that's kind of what I wanted to bring it up to, just so that it was, it was out there, you know, they can watch the video, they can find out what the general policy is. And this is on the website too, isn't it? The snow plowing policy.
Yes, it is. And generally, when, what we followed in the past too with mailboxes is, I mean, they try to get under them if they're put up properly. The blade should stay under them, unless like this time when it was the heavy snow. If the snow itself takes out the mailbox, we're not responsible for it. So if the snow is heavy and the snow hits it, if we hit the mailbox, we will fix it. But if the snow takes out the mailbox, it's your own thing to put it back up. And that kind of follows everybody. I mean, my, my mailbox gets hit four times a year from the state of Minnesota, and they don't really care. I'm sure Lloyd's gets hit from the state of Minnesota, and they don't really care.
I hope they put those hubble deals.
Yeah, when they work. Sometimes we've gone through two and three mailboxes in one season.
And just so that everyone's aware too, the, so the sidewalks on Highway 12, you have to wait for the state to tell you it's okay to plow those, right?
Right. So sometimes they don't get done for half a day or three quarters of the day.
Because you have to wait for the go-ahead.
Because they want to go back through, and if they're not done, they won't let us do them, because they'll fill them right back up.
We can do it, but it's at our cost.
And for those who don't understand what it's like to drive a plow truck, you should offer ride-alongs.
Everybody's an expert.
We have a lot of armchair drivers.
Sure. I don't know what you're talking about. I think it's fun driving, though, so hey, that's just, especially if there's no house there.
Anything else on that?
Is our liability covered at it? Do we have people in vehicles riding it?
I don't know.
We've done it.
We've done it.
Well, we, we've probably done it, but it still, if something happens.
You can, you can, like, police departments have forms that people sign before they ride with the police officers that they indemnize.
Do what I want.
Yeah, so it'd be easy to cop a form like that if you had to.
And it's almost hard, the whole conversation when you're plowing too. Somebody's asking questions, and you're driving, you're running all kinds of levers, you do run into problems.
You can't all that tough?
Try driving one of them.
The other thing too, that was brought up to me as well, is that is it possible that we can have some sort of like, like an online complaint form type spot? And I know that could be something, I'm going to redo the website to, to kind of have that they can just fill out something to send to you directly instead of you having to get, you know, 700 phone calls, maybe you only get 200, and you get 400 online inquiries.
There is a email that goes direct that's out there. That goes to Jess, and then it goes to Wayne.
We also have a complaint form.
Yeah, we do.
Is there one that'll just submit right online?
I'm not sure.
I don't think it's online.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant, is that they can just fill it out and then give all their detail in it, instead of just the regular kind of question, comment type of stuff that they send, an actual just form that, that you can put into a separate file, you know, whatever, on your emails or however it works out. Which again, it might need something when we revamp the website that.
Well, we have different forms out there that we, and we have a complaint form, so I think we could probably put it out there.
Yeah.
Put it out there, show it out somewhere.
Email that.
Yep.
Just so they understand, though, that if it's just a complaint because we filled their driveway, we're not going to do anything about it.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I'd have to clean everybody's driveway.
You know, if it's a complaint that Michelle lives on the corner, and that's a bus stop, and she's not shoveling, and it's still there two weeks later, then they fill out that complaint, we'll do something about it. But I'm just saying, you did that on the corner, but I'm just saying, if it's somebody just writing that says, you came by and filled my, my sidewalk, or you filled my driveway, we're not going to answer those.
Well, and the people that I've talked to as well, I, I've said that they have questions that they just need to, to reach out, either talk to Wayne or talk to Jess about it, they can get you an answer on it. I mean, you and I tell them how, you know, last year, they were so used to plowing it a certain way in our cul-de-sac, and I'm like, no, just fill my side yard with all the snow if you want, just get it out of the front of my heart, type of thing, and they'll work with you. You know, and that's just something that people need to not be worried about, reaching out to Wayne, he has a bike, I don't think.
No, I haven't yet. Not in a couple of years.
We're good? Okay. Comcast.
This is pretty simple. Our term for our last ordinance contract with them was 15 years. It was done in 2005, so we needed to redo the ordinance for franchise fees. We've had franchise fees with them for, since 19.
I think the first one was like 84 or something.
1984. And there were a few changes to the ordinance, but I worked with the woman from Comcast that contacted us, and then also our city attorney. Our city attorney reviewed some of her amendments three different times, and the final approval is the one that you have before you. That's a final approval of our city attorney. So I just need, there's two things here. I need a motion to, to adopt this ordinance, and then I need a motion to adopt Resolution 2023, so I could publish a summary of the ordinance in the newspaper. Any questions?
What would it take to get another company in here? I don't know. That's, it's a question that's going to ask. How do we, how does Comcast not monopolize Montrose?
How does Charter not monopolize Buffalo?
Or Delano.
Or Delano, or Watertown. I don't know, I don't know that anybody else would come here. I think Charter was contacted once before, and they said absolutely not, because they have to lay all their lines. And I don't know who else even comes into the area, because Charter is Time Warner.
We have Windstream.
Yeah, for cable, for internet.
Oh.
I thought they dropped it.
No, we have, my, my husband watches it every day, so I'm just saying, maybe some.
Yeah, I, I thought they dropped it too, because my parents had to switch off Windstream because they didn't offer the cable for them.
So sorry, you're still hooked up.
Don't say anything. Yeah, I mean, it's like, like he doesn't, we don't.
They're not offering it anymore.
I know, it was for internet.
They will offer internet, but they don't offer cable anymore.
Right. Oh, yeah. I was just saying, because we do, I see all these posts, and I'm like, I really like Windstream because they're really cheap.
I don't, I don't think they offer it to anybody anymore. I mean, you know, I don't think you can sign up anymore.
I thought there also was a small section of Montrose that was covered by a different cable company that they, but.
Heavy wireless, because they don't, we don't have anybody else that's, that's wired in. And nobody, because of expenses, nobody will come in.
Yeah, that was, that was one question I've had for actually quite a while. Why, why do cities sign those type of agreements with any company, whether it's Comcast, Frontier, Charter, whatever, that they're the only ones that are there for cable and internet type stuff? Just a general practice that they?
You want to get franchise fees, otherwise you don't get the franchise fees. I know like where my, where my mother lives on Highway 12, there is no company through there. It ends on 25, and it ends on 14, and nobody will come through there, because it's too expensive to put cable, and that's a small area, so. I think it'd be pretty hard getting somebody to come in here. And I'm pretty sure Comcast would say, oh, yeah, you can use our lines.
Right.
I'm pretty sure that'd be, absolutely not, so I don't know how you would get anybody else from here, to be honest.
And most cable companies work with your city then, like with your council meetings and your.
Yep. Wasn't Comcast kind of touchy on letting other people use it? I know I used to get a complaint years ago, that, you know, like if they wanted to sprint in here or something, Comcast, because they had disagreements with them, or whatever.
Yeah, they're pretty touchy, so that's why there's no other cable company here, other than, some people can pick some of them up, depending on their phones or whatever kind of service they have. I think there's some wireless kinds they can pick up, I'm not sure, but, but that was when Windstream first came in. We had the big, when we were in the council meetings and, and had the big hearings and stuff where Windstream wanted to bring in cable, and Comcast finally agreed, because they already had all their phones and stuff, their phone lines and stuff here. But that was a big, that was a challenge, just to get, let, for Comcast to let Windstream come in.
So is there a way then, when we upgrade everything over at the community center and all, you know, to get livestream, you know, like so people can watch our meetings and whatnot? Is there something Comcast can do?
They don't offer it. We've tried.
They don't offer any CCTV stuff either?
If we belong to the consortium that everybody else belongs to, then yes.
Back in the 80s, if they went to what with Comcast or Time Warner, whoever it was way back then, I don't know, Charter or Buffalo.
Gentleman in the corner got his hand up.
Have you considered looking at livestreaming on something like Twitch, using some sort of free service? All you need is a webcam and a laptop.
That would be up to, we, I mean, we are looking at different options, I know, with upgrading all of our stuff in, over at the community center, so I'm not sure what we would be looking at for that.
I've had some experience setting that up for churches, actually, down in Rochester, and so I actually have had some experience with that. Would you like, would you have any help with that?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to, I don't know. Do you want to talk to Deb? Deb, if you're okay with that?
Can you stretch your name and your, um, helping with that?
So basically, this is just extending the franchise already now? So we keep getting franchise fees.
All right, we need a motion then for the resolution.
Do you need to extend the ordinance first, or?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go ahead and extend ordinance 2020-06, granting franchise to Comcast.
I'll second it. All right, I'll vote I and Tom.
Hi.
Nicole. I. Lloyd. Kirby.
Yes.
Motion pass is 5-0.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2020-30.
I'll second. Uh, Kirby?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
I and Lloyd.
Hi.
Motion pass is 5-0. All right, Deb, approval of job description?
So the Personnel Committee worked on this a little bit. Jess, that works for the city, we looked at her job description because she wears kind of all different kinds of hats, and we tried to, I think, as you were negotiating the union contract, we, thank you, we tried to give her the title that she should have and deserves, quite frankly, and also the number of points she should have. And she was given an increase, and so we had to bring those points up to the level of that increase, thank you, by the way. So the new job description is before you. One of the things that we did change, as she always reported to the Public Works Department Director, we added myself and the deputy clerk for a few reasons, because we work, Wendy and I work side by side with her on a daily basis and help her with things. And she's also cross-training in some portions of my job and some portions of Wendy's job. So in order to do that effectively, she has to report to all three of us. So that, beside that, and adding a few of the things on here that she was already doing that were done here, that is, that is her new job description. Can we just need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Office Administrator Job Description.
A second.
Any discussion? All right, I will vote I and Lloyd.
Hi.
Kirby.
Yes.
Nicole. All right, and Tom?
Hi.
Motion pass is 5-0.
Thank you. And the last thing, discuss Christmas Eve. I put this on here because we, every year since I've been here with the city, you have allowed the employees to take off. I'm asking for something different this year. I'm going to ask that we give the employees the day off with pay. I had staff check with several other communities in the area, many of them have Christmas Eve as holiday. We do not get anybody here at City Hall. You asked us the last few years to keep track of that. We did not have one person the last few years. And the reason why I want to do that is because you have a wonderful team here, and city employees don't get bonuses, or they don't get, they don't get other incentives. It's a great morale booster to say to them, you can have this day off. And quite frankly, as, as time goes on here in the next few months, I'm also going to talk to you about changing our personnel policy to include it as a holiday. Everybody, so many people want off that day, so they have family functions, they have church things, they want off that day.
I did just look, it's on a Thursday this year, and that was part of our discussion in the current contracts too, was allowing that, so I'm good with that. Absolutely.
Last year, you guys gave them the day off, but they had to take vacation, and it was very upsetting to some of them, because they don't have a lot of vacations, so.
So the residents didn't have a lot of vacation to use.
I would like to be able to say to them, you have the day off. The City Council gave them the day off.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Would that be a negotiable item in the contract?
You have the contract.
Yeah.
It's in the.
No, but I mean, is it in the contract? It's another holiday?
No, we would just amend the.
It's an added floating holiday in the current contract that's in, for November approval. approval.
But we haven't decided their contract yet, have we?
That doesn't start until January.
No, I'm just saying it was a discussion in that contract already to do that.
And that doesn't start until January.
Right. It's an extra floating holiday if it's approved in November.
I need a motion a second. And then I will just, in a moment, put it on the consent agenda for approval on November 9th meeting. Okay?
I'll make a motion to give Christmas Eve off to city staff.
As a paid holiday.
As a paid holiday.
Same.
Any more discussion? All right. Tom?
Hi.
I'll vote I and Nicole.
Absolutely, yes.
Lloyd?
Hi, yes.
And Kirby?
Yes.
Motion passed. It's 5-0.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Motion adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it goes. We're good. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everybody, for coming in. All if you have something you want to put on the next council agenda, start emailing that to me. We don't really have anything right now. So we'll be working on it next week. It's going to be crunch time following weeks because we have the...
What's the date? The 12th or something?
The night.
We just have an update on COVID stuff, maybe, and how that's going, rotation.
As far as...
Maybe we should go back to that phone business.
Well, we're still social distancing, aren't you guys, then?
I don't know. We're not five, six...
We're not, we're not at the community center. The next meeting's at the community center.
Boy, and when you're here, we don't have to advise over when you're...
We're all in a mask right now. And over at the community center, we're all six feet apart. Correct?
Yes.
Yes.